Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the November 19th, 2019 Post Falls City Council member meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. Under announcements, ceremonies, and appointments, we have a couple announcements. The Idaho Transportation Department is holding an open house on the replacement and upgrade to the interchange at I-90 and Highway 41 to improve safety and mobility. The open house is tomorrow, November 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Red Lion Templin's Hotel in Post Falls. There are two opportunities to attend the Black Bay Master Plan Community Workshop this week. This next step will help staff move from the original plan to design by fitting the design into real-world conditions based on public feedback. The workshop dates are Wednesday, November 20th at 6:00 p.m. and Thursday, November 21st at 9:00 a.m., and both workshops are being held here at City Hall. And the city business offices will be closed Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th for the Thanksgiving holiday. And it's not on my list, but I did it earlier today and I want to do it again. I want to acknowledge Chief Warren Merritt, who's announced his retirement. I call that quitting, but that's beside the point. Chief, thanks for your eight years here with Cootney County Fire and Rescue and all you've done, and your relationship between the fire and police has been outstanding, and we appreciate all your efforts and wish you best luck in the future. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I believe there is one tonight.
Are we going to move G now, or?
Oh, yeah. I'm not following you for a second, so we do have an item on the consent calendar that I believe that a council member would like to move that to new business, and that was item G.
Motion for that?
Yes, please.
I'd move to move item G from the consent calendar to new business.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Waiting for you to give me a chance to break a vote on one of those. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Would you please present the consent calendar, shall we?
Item A is minutes from the November 5th, 2019 city council meeting. Item B is payables October 29th through November 11th, 2019. Item C is construction improvement agreement for the Ruby Springs subdivision. Item D is police department purchase of three Dodge Chargers. Item E is temporary construction easement with Ross Point Water District. Item F is agreement with TO engineers for boundary and topographic survey for the adult softball sports complex. Item G has been moved to new business. Item H, Nelson Williams annexation agreement. Item I, purchase of Blue Beam Plan review software. Item J is contract with Gino Construction for community development counter reconstruction, and that is it.
Any question in the consent calendar?
A move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Chairman, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings, and I was, for some reason, thought we had four coming up, so probably next meeting. Unfinished business, we have item A, the Howell Sewer Interceptor Change Order with SNL Underground. John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Beecham, Public Works Director. Everybody hopes they someday get to present a change order to City Council at a council meeting, so good to do that tonight.
Think you've got the monopoly on it.
The nature of this change order is that we've encountered extra-large rocks underneath the ground, 30 feet down, so I want to deliver that part of it first, and we'll get into the details. We'll talk a little bit about the project, what we're doing, and then recommended path forward. As you know, the Howell Sewer Interceptor Project bypasses Howell Lift Station, carries that sewer down Maguire Road to existing collection system, basically eliminates a lift station from our system. So that is why we have undertaken this adventure. Right in the middle of this project is a rail crossing. We are boring 30 feet underneath that railroad, so kind of a key component to the project is to get underneath it. In short, we've, like I said, we've found larger-than-expected boulders. Boulders are expected when you dig on the prairie. Boulders three feet and up are not generally expected to be numerous. They're still expected, but not a whole bunch of them. So here's some photos just to give a sense of scope for what the contractor is looking at. The bottom of that hole is about 30 feet lower than the green strip you see on the side, which was the existing ground elevation. So they've got a bench built for the excavators to actually dig the hole to the bottom of the trench, a couple of 10-foot benches, and then a 10-foot bottom trench. These are the rocks that they're finding in that trench and in that bore. This is a view down for where the bore is. You can see the augers in the bottom of that bore pit. Those are 36 inches in diameter, so for a bit of a sense of scale, that steel pipe here in the center, if you can see that, is 36 inches in diameter as well. And then, again, for scale, there's one of the large excavators next to some of the rocks they're finding. So in advance of this project, we obviously talked with our consultant about how we're going to mitigate rock on it. There are different ways you can handle that. You can try to extensively characterize what the soil looks like and tell the contractors exactly what they will find 30 feet down, then they can bid it exactly correctly, and everybody is happy at the end of the day. You can't do that perfectly, obviously, 30 feet down. We tried to do some of this on an outfall project we're also working on. It was close to $50,000 just to get an idea of what the rock looks like that far down. So you can spend a lot of money trying to know everything at the beginning of the project. Generally, we think we know what the prairie soils are, so that was the assumption we had here. It's worth noting, at the south end of this project, Greenstone just did a project to install sewer at the same depth and did not hit the same size and number of boulders. The other thing you can do is you can put a lot of legalese in your contract that says no matter what you find, it's on you. Generally, contractors will mitigate that risk by charging you more upfront, so you pay for it through that risk instead of discussing it like we are tonight. And the third option, maybe the most painful, but also the method we've selected and possibly the most fair, is to negotiate if you find those rocks. The benefit there is if you don't find them, you don't pay for them. I want to go back to this. The negotiation is really structured in a public works contract. The first thing you do is you try to negotiate a change order, which is what we're doing right now. The next thing is an injured party can file a claim. From there, you can go to mediation, and there either to arbitration or to a lawsuit, depending on what the documents say. So we're trying to solve this in the least escalated manner, and I think, hopefully, we have a path forward on that. We did consider, okay, do we give up at this point? You guys have the change order in front of you, but we're talking about not quite $700,000 of additional work, so this is a major change to the project, and the first thing we looked at is, does it still make sense to do this project? Unfortunately, it does, or fortunately, it does, depending on how you look at it. We eliminate a lift station. It would cost us more than this to rehabilitate that lift station for the first time, and then we'd have to maintain that into perpetuity at that point. And then, another option we looked at is a time and materials contract. So with this, the contractor would either charge us a, would charge us an hourly rate, and that rate is somewhere around $750 an hour for hours worked. And they would work until they were done, is what the subcontractor originally said that's doing the bore. So we said, well, what about a cap on that? We'd sure love to see a cap on this. And they said, I don't think we're going to be able to agree to that. That puts all the risk on us and all the benefit on you, the city. You only pay for what work gets done, and we know that we might do four more weeks of work for free. So they weren't willing to sign off on that. At the end of the day, the subcontractor originally doing the bore wasn't even willing to participate going forward. The prime contractor has agreed to do the work himself, and so that's sort of behind-the-scenes their contract negotiations. The other downside to a time and materials contract is that you are, you have to babysit, basically. If you're paying somebody $750 an hour, you want to know that they're working a full hour every hour. So we'd be paying an engineer to sit there and watch them, make sure they're actually doing that. The difference in watching and not watching for our engineering contract is about $40,000 for the same duration, so not insubstantial money. With that, we have a proposed change order that basically will give the contractor one lump sum to finish the project, finish the bore under the tracks, and to compensate for additional costs in digging the trench. I can talk a little bit more about that in half a second. The other thing it does is it adds time to the contract. That's 84 days for the bore, and I think it's 40 days, if I recall correctly, for the additional trenching work. And then, as a second action item, we would amend our contract with Welsh Comer to provide the lower oversight amount for this extra construction work. I'm going to jump back to my picture of that trench and show you why the rocks matter for the excavators. So you can see the trench box in the bottom of that picture. As the excavator digs down and hits a rock, if they can't get the rock out through the trench box, they have to pull that out with an excavator, dig a bigger hole, get the rock out, get the trench box back in so the pipe fitters can get in the trench and keep going. So what was one scoop with an excavator is now a 20-minute project. The estimate was it slows them down just for their digging portion of the project, something like 20% of the day for digging out one of those rocks. In terms of numbers, as I mentioned, not insubstantial. The original contract to SNL was just over $1 million. This change order to SNL would be for $674,000. It's worth noting, there was originally a $51,000 contingency on this project, which we were authorized to handle at the staff level. We've used that for three change orders so far that don't add up to that $51,000, but that's what was authorized at the original council meeting. So the total requested authorization for the project would be about $1.76 million. On the engineering side of things, the original contract was $309,000. Additional services to watch this additional work over the months to come would be $40,000. Again, there's a contingency, that's what was authorized at the initial meeting, and the total authorized for Welsh Comer would be $364,600. The recommendation would be to move forward with this. The first thing it does is minimize financial risk to the city. We could go with a different contractual arrangement where we're basically paying somebody until they're done. We don't know what that final number would be. It puts you guys in the awkward spot of us coming back and saying, hey, we spent all our money, we're two-thirds of the way through the tunnel, do you want to go another third? This captures that risk, it puts it on the contractor to manage it, and he's really the person who's the best able to manage that risk. It also allows us to complete the project as we originally intended to do, and then there's an immense value to this that I can't give you a dollar figure for, but this gives us a path forward. So far, SNL has been really good to work with through this issue. They haven't, their subcontractors sent them a stop-work notice. We didn't receive anything from SNL that said we're counting the hours our excavator idles or anything like that, so they've just been working with us, trying to find a path forward. Having that good relationship with the contractor is pretty invaluable on a project like this. So with that, I stand for any questions.
John, you talked about the original change order, and then you also talked about the additional engineering from Welsh Comer. Is that the next item on the agenda?
I believe it is 1A and 1B on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
So as part of the downfall of a time and materials thing is that we'd have to require additional engineering oversight, and you threw out the number $40,000, and then this is a lump sum, and you still have $40,000 for additional engineering oversight. So is that not a savings, or?
The original additional services from Welsh Comer was $80,000 when we were looking at that time and materials proposal. So there's a savings of, there is less additional expenditure, maybe a better way to categorize that.
John, how far along are we on this project? Are we just right at the railroad crossing?
The bore is, I believe, 10.4 of 135 feet under the railroad track. Much of the trench work has been done, though, the remaining part of the project.
I think I've seen the questions asked. Counsel, how would you like to act? Or how would you wish to act if you don't like it?
I would move to approve that we approve the Howell Sewer Inceptor Change Order with SNL Underground.
Motion second, further discussion. Chairman, roll, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. I think, you got them all right?
We need to approve the Welsh Comer.
Then, in addition, I would move to approve that we approve the additional services agreement with Welsh Comer Engineers.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Thanks, John. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Speak, come forward and name, please.
For the record, Warren Merritt, Fire Chief of the Cootney Fire, and I'm not up here to ask for a change order. How's that sound?
Well, you kind of are.
Well, I guess I am, but not for a little bit. I guess what I want to do is just take a minute and talk a little bit about the candy cane run, which Cootney Fire has traditionally done, and our participation in the Winterfest Festival this year. So we have struggled for the last few years trying to cover all the neighborhoods, which neighborhoods. We drive through neighborhoods and nobody's there because they're at a school function, and so for the, for this year, and this is really the point of this, for the citizens is, for 2019, we're going to be a full partner with the city of Post Falls, bringing Santa Claus on a, on a fire engine. We think it's going to be the 43-sea grave. We hope that there's not a lot of snow that day. And be set up in a tent, so we've worked closely with the Parks Department, but we want to get the word out to the public that we are not going to be driving the neighborhoods in 2019. We're still going to do the candy cane run in Dalton Gardens because we can still make that work. So that's really the point tonight, is that we look forward to that opportunity, we look forward to continuing to partner with the city, and finding a little bit of holiday cheer in the neighborhood. So with that, I appreciate the mayor's comments tonight. I've been doing this about 45, a bit over 45 years, and while I still got something else maybe left in me, it may not just be in a fire chief's job, I just think it's going to be something else. Plus, I get a lot more time with my, with my grandkids, so. They're one and a half and nine, and they occupy my weekends right now all the time, and I look forward to that, so. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Next item, then, is new business, and the first item is a professional service agreement with Keller Associates for Pleasant View Corridor Sewer Study.
Good evening again, John Beecham, Public Works Director. I sort of apologize for being on the agenda so much tonight, but there's, this is actually kind of a fun study, so something fun to present after the last one. The project background for this sanitary sewer study is, there's been, as long as I've been with the city, so a little over five years now, and I think well before that, historic interest in folks developing along the Pleasant View Corridor. It's got great access to the freeway land that's available, so there's been interest in that, but there has not been an easy way to get sewer to folks who would want to develop on the Pleasant View Corridor. Our sewer master plan was updated in 2019, and in conjunction with that, there's been some renewed development interest in that area. The master plan in that area changed a little bit, but generally, it combined previous planning documents, the 2009 Rathsford Prairie wastewater master plan with the city's 2012 sort of more local wastewater collection system plan. Currently, in that area, the developers, as I state here, and this is kind of my analysis of it, are economically pressured into developing some sort of onsite sewer system. So basically, that means a septic tank. So you've got industrial development unable to discharge anything into that septic tank, really can't grow in the way they might want to, and they can't build things maybe in the way they want to, so they're forced into some other lesser use of that property. So the point of this project is to take our existing master plan and refine it into a more concrete plan for the area, something that, in theory, could be done sooner, and then to look at what that would actually entail. So it is a complicated area to provide sewer to, and I'll kind of show you why. There is a low spot in the north, which the master plan shows collecting here at this north regional lift station that's up by Highway 53. That would pump probably down Maguire Road to the water reclamation facility here. Sorry, I'm not running that mouse very smoothly. There's another low spot in this pink area that, in the master plan, collects by gravity and runs out Tobeck Road. We did approach the property owner there and found that there's not an interest in providing an easement for that at this time, so from the get-go, we would be looking at a lift station in this vicinity instead of that gravity line. And then there's a third basin on the south that drains underneath Celtis Way to another lift station. So to combine all of these into a holistic plan for one single road that seems continuous is a bit of work. So what we're proposing to do is have Keller and Associates, who did the master plan, look at this in more detail, and the area outlined in green, and really specifically at the properties outlined in red here, to figure out what would it take to get sewer all the way up that road, sort of the backbone for folks to build into. This would provide a higher level of detail than what's in the master plan, which is basically, you're going to need a lift station. Well, our standard lift station is this much, this many dollars. You're going to need a force main, it's this much per foot. This really will get into, okay, where would it be situated? What do the grades look like? And then also to take into account some recent development interest and some specific parcels that are shown in that red area. Where we would go with that is to use this plan to try to get some funding for the infrastructure that needs to be done. At this point, that's sort of an open-ended desire. We could look for grants, economic development grants for that sort of development. We could entertain the idea of an urban renewal agency, forming a district out there, or other. If you have great ideas, let us know. The way it would work is we would basically start with the existing concepts, try to come up with some near-term interim measures that work for that, and the sort of critical element is to go out and actually do some survey work to verify that it, that grades work on the whole system, there's no awkward high spots where the water won't flow, and then to provide a final recommendation to us for use in seeking funding. And that final recommendation, I think it's important to note, would have phasing recommendations in it, too. So we might get that area in red, a path forward, but if we don't have a way to expand beyond that, in the best interest of the city, we've sort of done a disservice in providing that sewer up there. Scope would be basically three phases, brainstorm and refine, survey, and then final recommendations. That would all be done in February. I did include this, if you want to go through any of the details on what's included, but the long and short of it is, there's this initial sort of alternatives development task, $16,000 for survey, that's actually sort of an allowance. If we don't need that much survey work, we won't spend that much money on it. About $11,000 for the final recommendation, and then there's a $12,000 contingency. That's, at this point, not anticipated to be used, but if we needed to do something like update the sewer model that came out of our master plan, that's what we would use that task number seven for, give us an up-to-date planning tool that incorporates the findings of the study. With that, any questions?
Questions, John? And just, we, Shirley and Council President Wilhelm and I had met with companies that are looking out in that area, and that was, that's obviously one of the, companies looking to possibly relocate to that area, and one of the biggest obstacles they have is lack of sewer. That is the biggest obstacle. And this would address that as well as additional properties out there. So we will, I do believe we'll see development out on the west side there, and it's going to have to be sewer, and this is going to tell us how we have to do it, so. I would personally support the expenditure in the contract. Counsel comments?
I would make a motion, if no one wants to comment, to approve the professional services agreement with Keller Associates, Inc. for the Pleasant View Corridor Sewer Study.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is new business, item G from consent calendar, the addendum number one to the master development agreement for Foxtail Preliminary PUDN subdivision. Oh, it's John.
Good evening again, John Beecham, Public Works Director. I did not actually have a presentation ready for tonight, but I appreciate the heads-up there were some questions on this. What I've done is I've prepared some sort of visual aids to help talk through any questions you might have on this addendum to a master development agreement. And I should note, I get the benefit of fielding questions because I touched this topic last, but there's been a lot of help provided by, I shouldn't say help, there's been a lot of effort on the community development side and legal side for developing this, so I may lean on those folks if I run out of answers for you. In short, the Foxtail development had some initial recommend, or requirements as part of their development agreement to construct sewer facilities. Shown on this map, which is an exhibit from their development agreement, are some of their obligations, which were to actually construct this sewer line on Meyer Road when they grew to a certain size through this area, which I'll show on a different map, is largely in the county at this point, and five-acre parcels unlikely to develop soon. They also had an obligation to provide funding through the form of a surcharge for a lift station located here on 12th Avenue, and for a force main carrying that to the water reclamation facility. You folks have seen the northeast quadrant study, sort of through its various stages, but this was a developer-led effort to provide an alternative way to provide sewer to the northeast part of Post Falls, basically to provide an alternate to what was in the master plan. That was eventually adopted by the city council as an addendum to the master plan. This agreement attempts to capture the new obligations that would apply to Foxtail and hopefully apply to other future developers in the area as part of that sewer study that was finalized about a year ago. It's also worth noting, the Urban Renewal Agency, through their East Post Falls District, agreed to fund three projects out of that northeast quadrant study. What that has done is it took some obligations that would have been a developer obligation and put them on the Urban Renewal Agency to fund and the city to build. So this contract is trying to capture all of these moving pieces into one document. I think it does that, but there's a few bits to it. To compare the two sewer plans, Foxtail's shown in purple here, that's my addition, but this is out of the northeast quadrant study. The study basically provides for, from the 2012 version to the 2019 version, provides for additional area that can be served with development that's going in currently, so not anticipating future development, would allow for the construction of a force main down here in the area along 12th Avenue to the east of town currently. These are projects I mentioned the Urban Renewal Agency has agreed to fund, specifically this Highway 41 line and the lift station itself, but not the force main, which is sort of a key funding component. You have half the project funded. So this is cut and paste out of the staff report. I don't really, I will go through this if you'd like, but I wasn't intending to read it word for word. The highlights are, there will be a reduced surcharge from the 3,000-plus adjusted-for-inflation surcharge to a $1,800 surcharge and a second surcharge on the next page. And then there is a $500,000 sort of contribution toward the East Post Falls projects if the urban renewal funds fall through before the district closes. Or if the, the project- or if the projects are not done by the time the district closes, so that funding falls through. Second surcharge I mentioned is here, the seven hundred dollars. So, it's a decrease in surcharges to the developers. It does require them to fund oversizing of a sewer line in Fenwickus Road and to do some of that construction work themselves that would otherwise have been on the city. That was my attempted summary.
So, the 12th Street force main, who's on the hook for that now?
The short answer is it's a partnership between the city and the developers. That force main alleviates need to pump all of that sewer through the south end of town through a chain of lift stations, so the existing- the portion of that force main that serves existing users would be on the city as part of our collection system. The part that serves new connections going forward would be this eighteen hundred dollar surcharge that would be coming from the developers.
So, it's an eighteen hundred dollar surcharge, I kind of lost track of your pages here. There's two surcharges, that's one of them, the other one is for seven hundred bucks. I guess part of them having a hard time connecting is that the developer is going to be responsible for essentially the entire sewer construction, and then Urban Renewal came and said, no, we'll cover some of that. And now, it seems like they're asking for more city help for the 12th Street force main.
The developers were never obligated to fund the 12th Avenue lift station or force main on their own. They were paying a surcharge toward it that, in theory, when all of them had paid in their surcharge, we would have enough money to build it. The lift station component of that was offset by the Urban Renewal funding. This is an updated value to provide for the developers' part, the new growth portion of that force main.
Okay, that's the part I was missing, was that they never had an obligation to provide it in the first place?
The surcharge fulfilled their obligation on that, their portion of that obligation.
And so, that five hundred thousand dollars, what is the- what is the odds? What are the odds that that won't be enough?
We had a lot of meetings on this topic, and in the end, it is a negotiated number attempting to capture an immeasurable risk. We believe we should be able to complete all of those projects within the Urban Renewal District's life. That- that's the path forward at this point. There are no major roadblocks keeping us from doing that. So, a sort of a what-if that was thrown in the contract to rescue us if we get there. I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
The odds are really, really low. We frankly think that this will be done timely and probably with time to spare. Having said that, when you're looking at a deadline you know that's coming up, you want to make sure that you have some contingency built in to cover you in the event that you get there. So, we think that, number one, we think it'll be done and completed without issue. Number two, we think the number that we've arrived at probably gives us adequate security that if lightning strikes, that we can then have funds to complete the project.
I guess my biggest concern is, are the taxpayers made- made whole as much under the new agreement as under the old?
I would say yes. I mean, the things have changed, it's hard to compare it exactly one to the other because some of the lines aren't being built now, new lines are being constructed, so it's hard to- to give it a complete apples-to-apples comparison. I would say that we spent a lot of time working on this with frankly trying to make sure that the city is made whole at the end of the day, that we're in a better and more secure position than we were under the previous agreement. I think we've reached that. There were things that were unfunded under the previous agreement that left us kind of hanging. We have all of that essentially baked into the pie now. We know where- what our contingencies are, we know what our obligations are, we know what the developers' obligations are. I think that's a huge step in the right direction. There's some things that were explicit now, like our participation in the force main. We- that was always assumed, but we know roughly a third of the cost of that force main is to replace existing capacity. We've been able to put a number to that where there wasn't one in the past. So, it's my long way of saying, yeah, I think that we've- we're in a much better position today than we were under the past agreements.
Thank you, I'm good, and I appreciate you guys pulling this out and taking the time to put this together, because I was- I was trying to connect the dots on my own in the packet, and I just need somebody to draw me a picture, because I can't put this together, so. So, thank you for taking the time.
I would only add, and I might not have all my facts straight, but I was on planning and zoning when we- when Foxtail first came to us, and sewer was a big issue, and the developers didn't want to pay any of it, and we declined the development. They came back to the table basically with the old agreement, and they were saying, you know, it's like, from a developer's standpoint, we don't know what's going to happen, but at least we'll- we'll participate, we'll help make this happen. And it was enough at that point in time for us to go back and say, well, at least we've got some sort of agreement, some way to hold these guys' feet to the fire a little bit, and, you know, at least we've seen the development out there, and I, you know, I don't- I'm glad you guys feel good with this, because I'm like you, I couldn't sort through it, but I'm glad to see that we're at least going back to the table and readjusting that, because it started off, it was not a good plan. We made it a little bit better, and I think it's even better now, so, if that helps.
If it does, thank you.
I'm good.
No other comments? Entertained a motion?
I'd move to approve the addendum number one to the master development agreement for Foxtail preliminary PUD and subdivision.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks. Thanks, John. Next item up is ordinances. Tonight we have one, and it's Nelson Williams' annexation.
Move to place the ordinance Nelson Williams' annexation file number ANNX-0005-2019 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Excuse me. Almost a second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 1.634 acres, located in the northeast quarter of Section 1 Township 50 North, Range 5 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning the annexed property Community Commercial Services, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance Nelson Wilson Williams' annexation file number ANNX-0005-2019, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, administrative staff reports, electrical and plumbing inspector report. Oh, it's John again.
While they're working on that, I'll take a quick moment and introduce an old, familiar face, hopefully. We've been rejoined by John Cafferty, he started last week, you may recognize him as the person who used to sit in this chair, so we're lucky to have him. He will be bringing a wealth of knowledge to our staff, so.
Welcome back, John.
Welcome back.
Good to see you.
John.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Justin Miller, building official for the city of Post Falls. I come here just to give you a quick staff report on the plumbing and electrical inspections we took over about four and a half years ago. Why did we take the electrical plumbing inspections over? Time savings for the contractors. We can now complete all the inspections, framing, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical all in the same day, versus where previously they would call into the state, get their inspection. If it passed, then the next day they could call us, and then we would come out, so, you know, we're saving them anywhere from two to four days on their inspections. It makes a better product for the contractor, quicker for them to get everything done in the end. You know, we average can save, like I said, save them four to six days on their build, which in this time is pretty huge for them. Contractors prefer the interaction with one municipality, getting all answers done here versus coming here to get half the answers and then having to go to Coeur d'Alene to get the other half of the answers. They all say that they enjoy the one-stop shop, saves them a ton of stuff, and the revenues for that pays for the employees. As you can see here, this is a quick graph of issued permits that we have from 2015 when we started. Plumbing, we started in June of 2015, and electrical, we started in July of 2015. And as we went on, I have a little note up there in the top corner that says that it doesn't reflect multifamily units. When I say that, I mean, so when you pull a permit for a multifamily, it's just one permit, but you have twenty-four units, so it's like twenty-four single families, but it only reflects like one unit. So, with that being said, technically, there's about five hundred more permits for each one of those if you did them all individually. Same thing with inspections, you can see they're greatly increasing, and be the same way with that. You would have twenty-four inspections. You go to do a single-family house, fifteen to thirty minutes to just to do a single-family house, you go to do a twenty-four unit apartment complex, you're two hours there, so it's a great time difference. The end number in 2019 is going to probably be about six to eight hundred more inspections on each one of those, so, you know, we'll be four thousand, over four thousand inspections by the end of the year for the plumbing and electrical side of it. When we took this over 2015 from the state, this is a chart of revenue that we got from the state of Idaho from 2007 to 2015. How that worked, you went, pulled your permit from the state, and then each month, they gave us twenty percent of whatever each permit was. We didn't have to do any work, we just got the twenty percent from that. You can see, you know, like for electrical, our highest was just under twelve thousand, and for plumbing, it was just over ten thousand. The next slide is when we took over mid-2015 to 2019, and you can see this year, we're for electrical, we're two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and for plumbing, we're at three hundred and three thousand revenue that we brought in, so it's been a great benefit to us. With that said, I stand for any questions?
Thanks, Justin. Any questions for Justin?
Just a comment. It's just, it's nice to- I appreciate that report, because when we made that decision those years ago, it was kind of like, eh, you know, we hate to go out and hire people if it's not going to pay for itself. It's good to show that we made a good decision.
It is. It's probably one of the best decisions Shelley and I made together, and it was rough to do it and go through it, but we got through it, and, you know, and we have great staff that keep up with it.
Good job.
Good job.
Thanks, Justin. Appreciate it. Mayor comments? All I will say is Thanksgiving next week, I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, please travel safely, return home safely. Counsel comments?
Linda, so? I have a couple. I would like to congratulate Counselor Carrie Thorson, who received the first-ever Legacy Award from the Seroptimist this- this past week at their yearly award ceremony at the Cedars, and what that entails is women and businesses getting together to help other women when they are having issues or problems in their lives or, you know, having troubles on their journey, and Carrie has been actively involved in that for more than thirty-five years, so congratulations, Carrie. I think that is really a big deal. Also, I would like to congratulate Mayor Jacobson on a very informative, very well-put-together State of the City today at Templin's. I thank you for the information as always, and appreciate your service as well, Mayor, so thank you.
Carrie, I was just going to say, I want to congratulate you as well, but Legacy, I'm glad Linda explained it, because-
I'm still alive, yeah.
Well, we brought that up while we were there, we were kind of wondering, but-
We're glad you are.
You will leave a good legacy, though.
Thank you. I have a thank you in tagging along on Linda's for the State of the City address today. Kit and Stephanie, Kit Hofer, and Stephanie Pugh, who has a married name now, that escapes me, they did a wonderful job on the PowerPoint, as I shared with Stephanie, because I'm not a fan of PowerPoints. This one nailed it, it was excellent. So, your presentation was excellent, too. It was only enhanced by the quality of the PowerPoint that accompanied it, so, kudos.
Well, I want to thank Stephanie and Kit, and I want to thank John Beecham, because I didn't know until my wife informed me that he was helping clean up a projector problem, so I didn't even see it, because I couldn't see the screens, but-
It takes a village.
I just want to commend John, I mean, you were our star pupil here tonight. But I, you know, it's not sexy stuff, but I really appreciate the depth of the information that you prepare, and it's not like too much and gets down to my level, so, great job, I appreciate that.
I owe a lot of thanks to you.
Thanks, everybody.
Great. Do we need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
Next motion is?
adjourn.
Those in favor?
Aye.
You need to adjourn, thank you.